And the live transcript, so the board is good to open the meeting.
Thank you, Dorothea. Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Pittsburgh Village Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, brought to you via Zoom due to ongoing precautions against COVID. My name is Susan Loda and I'm Acting Chair of the PZBA in matters relating to the proposed development at 75 Monroe. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to open the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Member Shannon?
I.
Member Marshall?
Hi.
Member Kitchura?
Hi.
Chairperson Loda?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We have one agenda item to address tonight. Does any board member have anything to disclose in regard to the agenda tonight? And Dorothy, if you would ask each board member individually?
Absolutely. Member Shannon?
I do not.
Member Marshall?
I do not.
Member Kitchura?
None.
Member Loda or chairperson Loda, sorry?
That's okay. Yep, actually, actually, I do. I met with applicant Krista Marzo of Mark IV Enterprises. Last week, I wanted to add to my comments from our last meeting with some concrete examples as to what would help bring the proposed project design more into alignment with the LWRP policies and guidelines, and I will share those comments tonight. We are meeting tonight with Krista Marzo of Mark IV Enterprises along with Craig Jensen, a architect with CSJ, Mr. Nadler and Peter, Peter Vars. Chris Nadler is a lawyer and Peter Vars, I believe, is the engineer for the project. The purpose of our meeting tonight is to continue a conversation on the overall design of the project that began at our last meeting in December. And at that time, this board requested a depiction of all seven buildings together in one view. That view was provided and is included in the meeting packet tonight. So Chris, thank Marzo, Krista Marzo, thanks very much for that. We will be considering the project design in light of the LWRP, and that is the local waterfront revitalization plan, but we won't vote tonight on the project's consistency with that document. We are waiting for TY Lynn to evaluate the site plan for us. And once it's been determined that the application is complete, we will set a date for a public hearing for the LWRP consistency review. Before I ask Chris to begin the conversation and discussion, I'd like to mention to the public that if anyone would like to comment on the project tonight, please submit your thoughts in writing to the village clerk. That's villageclerk@villageofpittsburgh.com. I also invite every resident to stop by Village Hall to see a large rendering of the project in its entirety. All residents are welcome, but just a reminder, you'll need to be masked and report your temperature before entering the meeting room at Village Hall. At the LWRP consistency review hearing, the public will be invited to express their opinions live during the meeting. So if there are no objections, I would like to repeat the comments I made to Mr. De Marzo last week. Or Chris, if you would prefer to start the presentation, however you would like to proceed.
No, thank you for taking the time with us tonight, and please proceed. You know, we're here to answer any questions and whatever we can do to help.
Yep, terrific. So again, these are the comments that I made to Chris last week, and they fall into three categories. All.
If I, if I may, just before your comments, just a quick question. These are your individual comments from your own perspective, not comments of the board to Mr. De Marzo. Okay.
These are, these are, these are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for that clarification. So as I said, I made comments in three broad categories, all with a view to enhancing variation in the project, and that is across buildings. So there are seven buildings, and the point is to create a, some very, some variation in those, across those buildings. So the first category I talked about was the height, height of the buildings. Right now, there are three stories. And when you look at the rendering, and I do understand that given the topography of the location and the curve, that this project doesn't, is certainly not as linear. It's not as the straight line as representations would suggest. That being said, the buildings are three stories. And I think that if we had a higher building and a lot, a couple lower buildings, that alone would, would kind of cut the, that horizon, that, that similar horizon that we see when we look at all the buildings. I also, so I thought a way to do that was to maybe increase the height of some third floors. Maybe those third floors would get, you know, a nice higher ceiling. And I'll address the windows later. And I also thought in that a pitched roof on a, on a building or two would also be contextual with what we see throughout the village and on Shane Place, and also would be a way to add some, add some height and add some very variation. So the next I talked about, I mentioned variation in the windows. I do appreciate the economies of scale from a building point of view. But I do think maybe on the third floor, some, somewhere buildings could be tall, windows could be taller. Because when you look across the seven buildings right now, you can see what, what strikes me is similarity and, and not differentiation or variation. And maybe a way to do that would be to add some different window combinations, transoms, which I love and are, you know, throughout Main Street, and some window headpieces, some architectural details to kind of enhance the windows here and there so that we don't, so that they don't look so, so uniform. The last thing I said was kind of looking at the, the, the buildings, like all seven of them as a group. And I do, I, I love all of the canal commercial photographs and renderings that Chris and his team, Mr. De Marzo and his team have provided to us over the years. And I thought wouldn't, you know, and many of them are a warehouse. And so I thought if one building, I thought five, maybe could be, have a uniform facade. That uniformity would be different than the other buildings, which have a, you know, kind of varied facades, you know, kind of done in, in threes. So I thought that would be a way to achieve some, some variation, maybe that could have a pitched roof. Anyway, once again, these are, these are my thoughts. I also, it struck me kind of looking across the building that the, the buildings, that the facades are are in thirds, like they're kind of three sections. Each building has three sections. Maybe one building could have two sections. Again, something to, to, to break up the, the, the uniformity. I know that you have achieved some, some variation per, per building, but when you look across the buildings, all, all seven, maybe not having the sections of the larger buildings in threes would help. And of course, this doesn't address building seven. And then just, you know, because I was wondering if the positions of the buildings could be changed and what the thinking was for not having a building, three or, three or four of the smaller ones on the Monroe Avenue end, which would be, you know, kind of more contextual, consistent with the, you know, with the, with surrounding neighborhoods. So that was kind of not exactly, but these are some notes I used. And so that's what I mentioned to Chris, and that is something that I wanted to get in front of the, of the, of the group as we, you know, try to work on this project together and, you know, build something we all love. So that was me. Would anyone from the Mark IV team like to address anything? How about other board members?
Well, first of all, Susan, thank you for those comments. I think those are exactly the, the type of comments that, that we, we are hoping for expecting so we can get an idea. I think Craig Jensen or our tech can speak to some of the window issues, some of the variation issues. But I think maybe it might make sense for the rest of the board to sort of follow, follow your lead there and give feedback, if, if any.
Yeah, I mean, this is Craig. I'm perfectly happy to give some comments back, Susan, to what you were, you know, reviewing there. Or like Chris said, if it makes more sense to hear more comments first, that's totally fine.
Would a board member like to make any comments at this point? Maybe just to add one thing. I think building seven is a problem. It's, it's a monster. It's a big building, 258 feet. And, and it's present state. I think, I mean, there's quite a lot of variation going on that facade. But I, I think it is a, I think it's big. And I believe, at least from the letter I, this board received from HPB, I think they have kind of some similar thoughts regarding building seven.
Thanks, Susan. Just so we can take notes correctly, say it's big. Is that linear from a standpoint, end to end?
Um, so, you know, you know, that's the last building down on the site. It's, it, 258 feet is, is a very long building. It's much longer than any of the other ones. You know, I wonder if I wouldn't mind a fourth story down at that end if another building could have two stories or, or one, you know, you have a couple of buildings that are, that have a back piece that's three stories and a front piece that's two stories, and maybe one could be two stories and one story. I mean, I, I just, I, I do think that's another way to achieve some, some variation. So at that last building, I, I, this is just me, I think an improvement would be raising the roof on, on one end. And I think it is, I think it's too long. There is no cut through. There's no, it's just a very long building. Any other, any board member?
Me.
Oh, great, John.
I agree with you, Susan. I'm building three. It's just way too big. I mean, it doesn't really look big on this nice little group of buildings, but 258 feet is, is too much. And I'm just wondering if there is some way to maybe put a couple of alleys in or, you know, give it a break or do what, you know, as to suggestions, I agree with two. Maybe another story on one end and break, break it up into two or more buildings. I would really like to see that.
No, thank you, Joanne, very much.
Guess I'll, excuse me, chime in on building seven. I might as well throw building six in there as well. And I'm going to quote a couple of things from the LWRP. And one of them is the very first policy. Let me back up and say to the architects and Chris, I really appreciate how far you've come. I truly believe that the efforts that you've put in will have a meaningful impact on the project and its development and the possibilities to move forward. So I just want to commend you for all that work and I, and very much do like many aspects of these buildings as they've been designed. So I just want to say thank you for that work that you put in. So in policy one, I'll just restate it and then unlike last time, to be a little bit more specific, similar to Susan's private meeting, but here in a public format instead, I'd like to express to you some solutions that I might have you consider and ponder. In policy one, it's to foster a pattern of development in the town and village that enhances the character, preserves the open space, makes efficient use of infrastructure, minimizes the adverse effects on development. In paragraph one, it specifically states that it's important that the historic scale and patterns of development be recognized and preserved to the maximum extent possible. In paragraph two, it states, no action will be undertaken, dot, dot, which detracts from the historic character of the community. Change in the waterfront area contribute to and not detract from the historic character, and I'm paraphrasing some of this, but not detract from the historic character of the Pittsburgh community. Detract, the term itself, this is not in the LWP, but the term detract, the word means to cause someone or something to be distracted or diverted from. So if we are to not be distracted, or excuse me, should the development not detract from the historic character, that means it has to not be distracting. One of the things that creates a distraction is size and scale and persistency or perpetuity of the same style of development over time. In my mind, the project as created, in the extent of it as it is designed, in large part because of size and scale and mass, creates a detraction from the historic character of the community. Though I very much appreciate much of the architectural work and design that you've put into this, I think if the project as presented were to exclude building six and seven, space it out a little bit more, break up some of the larger buildings into little smaller subsets and create some of the differences and unique characteristics that Joanne and Susan have referenced. I think in that case, the sizing and scaling is small enough such that it's not detracting from the historic character of the village of Pittsburgh.
Thank you for that feedback, David. Can I just make sure I understand? You would be okay with this project in terms of LWRP policy number one? If building six and seven were removed from the project?
Along with other design and site plan elements, or not per se site plan, but just where things may be along that parcel and how to incorporate additional green space and a way to create the canal community that I think the LWRP is requesting. So to me, Chris, your question is, is would I approve it, you know, absent of six and seven as it is designed? No, but boy, that is the biggest part of what for me is holding me up.
Okay. Thank you for, for explaining that. If, is there a way that you could see this in compliance with LWRP policy one with building six and seven? What changes could we make to building six and seven that, that could bring us into compliance, aside from the other site plan type changes you would want to see elsewhere?
I am unable to visually, in my mind, think of a design that immediately comes to mind based on the size and scale of the buildings, the height, and how they've been laid out on this site plan. Suggesting that because of the, the height and the size and the scale and the degree by which it is a major transformative project that as you're looking at, takes ownership in its own right, as its own project, as its own thing. And I'll go back to our September 15th meeting where the project, in a little bit earlier form, but fairly similar in, in concept, the idea that it was its own unique identity. And by creating something that is less significant, it doesn't take ownership of the moment as much. And therefore, as you pass by it and you continue on to Shane Place and downtown, it doesn't dwarf it. Right? It doesn't take, it doesn't become its own thing. And so this is not a great analogy, but it's spur of the moment. You know, the Bills are playing on Saturday night and
Buffalo.
Yeah, right? Go Bills. But when you think of Orchard Park, you think the stadium. You don't think Orchard Park, the handle of the community. Now, that, that is uniquely different than what we're doing here, but it's still expressive of that size of a project and the persistency of a project having an ownership identity of itself that doesn't respect the community that it's getting built within. And I know you, I know you do respect the community, but in terms of what the LWRP is trying to create, that is my challenge. And so by eliminating them, being able to spread out what you have, maybe go up in height, down in height and some, create a little bit more of the visual appeal differences that Susan and Joanne have referenced. I think we have a really incredible opportunity here to put something in place. And I, I think I truly am having the challenge most with that. There's some other things that we can talk about, but I think that's the roadblock for me. And I'd love to hear your thoughts and opinions and maybe comments from the board as well.
I'm going to give, I have, I have one response to that that's going to be articulated like a lawyer, not an architect. So I hope Craig, Craig and maybe Peter will pick, pick up the narrative as a response. But this afternoon, I took a walking tour, the, via Google Earth of, of the village. Because I knew that, that that was a concern, David, and I knew it was a concern for other members as well. The, the identity of this entire project, that seems like a concern. We've, we've shown you all the buildings spread out next to each other. But when you look at this project, you're not going to see all the buildings spread out next to each other. When you stand on, in the middle of Main Street, you don't see the whole of Main Street. When you stand on one of the roads in Shane Place, you don't see the whole of Shane Place. You're never going to see all of these buildings together. If you're riding down the canal, if you're on Monroe Avenue, you're not going to perceive all of these buildings at once. It's going to be a series of events, just like Main Street and just like Shane Place. As you travel through it, you experience the different elements.
Certainly respect the feedback, and I would suggest to you that based on the linear design elements of this parcel in particular, the challenges with regards to roadways and the design elements that you've been that that walking journey, while you may not necessarily see them all at the same time, it has a, it continues to have a uniformity of design and, 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 and how the pedestrian relates to it, I think would have much greater consistency than anything you may see on Main Street or on Shane Place. And so taken from the riverway as well, or as a pedestrian, right? What I don't want to do is look at this development and say, it's how the car driving over Monroe Ave considers it. That's, that's not the right way to look at this. The right way to look at this is the person walking on the streets, walking next to the canal, right? One of the other elements of the LWRP is promote appropriate physical public access and recreation throughout the coastal area. Right? That's direct. The town and village self provide incentives to provide to private development projects, which provide public access and/or water-related recreational facilities. The hope would be, right, that as I'm considering the sizing and scaling and the development structure, I recognize that this is a weighing station within the LWRP. And my willingness to go as far as what I've just discussed, only up to building five and spreading that out, not building six and seven, but up to five, has conditional elements of public access that I know you've already worked to incorporate, but making sure that the public doesn't lose the canal as a part of the fabric of the community. And I, I just want to be, be careful that we, we judge the, the entirety of this. Again, not by being the driver across Monroe, but rather the walker or the biker on the other side going to U of R to work or the, the boats coming down the canal or on the, on the tour boats, right? That's how this should be judged. It's the aggregate.
Okay, thank you.
I think in the, the scope of that just as well, I mean, you're looking at four, I'll call them one significant building, seven, four large buildings, one, two, five and six, and then two smaller buildings. It's possible that five and maybe six, if six or some part of six might be included, doing so with having smaller buildings broken up a little bit more, might also create some appeal as far as the LWRP's review to me. And positionally to it, maybe by getting rid of six and seven, you can create more open space and green space while still having the big enough buildings to provide parking underneath.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just had one other thing. Policy one also asks to maintain and enhance the natural areas, recreation and open space. And there's just a couple phrases in there that we're kind of need to throw out. One is the concept of a ribbon of green along the canal to be incorporated into all existing and new projects. The other one, specific to in new projects, open space should be required as an integral component of the design scheme rather than a remnant of the development process. So based on the persistency of these buildings at this sizing, I do believe that the green space is a little bit of a remnant rather than integral to the design. And, and part of that to support that, I remember John had asked last time where the new green space was created, and it was pretty much where most convenient up by the road, you know, as a visual. And maybe it was helping as a visual buffer between the project as well. But what I don't want for this project to be is where visual buffers are necessary to gaze upon and look upon. And I mean, I, I think a lot of the architectural work that you guys have done should be looked upon. It's really quite nice. It's just too much.
Other comments or?
Other comments or do you want some uh feedback from us? Just wondering.
Craig, why don't um um why don't, why don't you start and um, you know?
Yeah, it can be a conversation. I'm sure it can go back and forth a little bit.
No, hold on.
I was just gonna say, I'd love to hear what John has to say.
Great. I was waiting for Dave to finish.
All right.
I couldn't hear Dave. He he wasn't wearing a mask.
All right, um, so let me make a couple of comments first on some things I've heard from Susan, Joanne and Dave, and then I'll kind of add something else at the end. Um, but um, you know, one, I'll start by saying, um, thanks for the PDF. I appreciate the, you know, full, you know, elevation view of all seven buildings. Um, and I'm gonna circle back to that at the end with my last comment about kind of this. They're all three stories, but we'll get there. Um, you know, one thing that Susan mentioned about, you know, having one of the buildings be kind of all the same exterior actually resonated with me. Because I think when we first started off these conversations, what, you know, three months ago, um, September, then December, and you know, now continuing into January. You know, one of the things I think I kind of said over and over and over again was there needs to be some some differentiation on the exterior of the building. And you guys did a pretty good job, right? A lot. There is a lot of differentiation on the outside of the building. And now when Susan mentioned, well, you know, maybe if one of, you know, not the largest building, but one of the medium to smaller sized buildings had the same exterior, it would make an even bigger contrast to the, you know, many changes you made to the other exterior um pieces to the other building. So that did resonate with me. I I I actually liked that comment. I think that's fantastic. Two, on building number seven, the largest building in 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 the project. You know, Joanne made, I thought, a pretty, I I never thought of it. Um, I thought the comment was great about splitting it up with what some kind of an alleyway. Um, and what, you know, additional thought I had was is that it would not be a symmetric slice down the middle, an alleyway, like something so that the building is not symmetric, you know, some narrow alleyway, but that the bill, you know, it's not fifty percent, fifty percent, it's some something different. And then my last comment, so the biggest hurdle for me is again, you guys, you guys did a tremendous job on the exteriors of the building, making changes. You have what looks to the exterior to be um multi-levels, but the fact is if I run a ruler straight across the top, they're all three-story buildings. So for me, I think to move this forward and 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 get to where at least I need to be. Um, what I would most like to see is that you have a three-story building, a two-story building and a single-story building. And that that is not repeated on that whatever you do for building one, two and three, you don't repeat that in in flipping to building four, five and six, right? I've always talked about how buildings one, two and three and four, five and six are really just a mirror image of one another in terms of the um, the footprint. And then you guys have done a tremendous job on making the exterior somewhat different. Um, for me, I think if you could have, you know, if if building one, two and three are one, two and three stories, it though, you know, it wouldn't be mirrored on the other side. So I think that's what that's what I'd like to see. You know, I think that's a, that's a huge change, something that visually I think shows that it's not the mirror image of what I see when I look straight down on the on on the on the plan view that you guys provided. But other than that, those are, I think those are the three of the three comments I think I I wanted to mention before we kind of get into more of a discussion.
Well, thank you.
I I didn't understand your last comment about one-story, two-story and three-story. Can you clarify that again, please?
Oh, sure. Um, so if we look at the elevation view on the last page of our meeting packet, um, that was the view I think I had requested in our last meeting. That's where it shows all seven buildings in a row. And it and and the point I'm trying to make is, well, you guys did a tremendous job with exterior features of the buildings, trying to make them multi-level. The fact is you go straight across the top with a ruler, every building is three stories. Every building is three stories. And so the point I'm trying to make is I think it would do a tremendous job. If one, so if one of the buildings was three stories, a second building was two stories, a third building was a single story, right? Cause you have building one, two and three, and then building four, five and six is what I call the mirror image, because they are mirrored image and footprint. Um, not not anymore in exterior look, because you guys addressed that. Um, so I'd like to see is that as you go down the buildings, the heights vary, right? And so to accomplish that, I think that's where I'm trying to get my comment in is that I would like, you know, for I'm I'm, this is just for exemplary purposes, because you want me to explain where I'm going. So when we look at building one, so if you made building one, two stories, right? Building uh six would not be two stories. Building six would be one story or three stories, right? And then building two, you'd make building two, let's say building two was three stories, building five would not be three, it would be one or two, right? I'm just trying to, what I'm getting at is that you have a variation in height of all the buildings. And then again, it's not that mirrored image that we've we've been working on for the last two meetings.
John, um, just I'm curious, would you, uh, what do you think about a fourth story?
I I would be, I would be open to a fourth story. Um, but again, I'd like to see a single story and a set and a two-story. So if adding a fourth story gives us even more differentiation, I'm completely open to that. Um, I would only suggest is that I don't think it'd be in the best interest to make building seven a four-story building. But but again, it's that it's that height variation. Um, you know, we've, I think we tackled some of the exterior variation. Um, I know Susan has some issues with the window variation, but that's, I think, a concrete example. I think that would push this forward a lot. If that, does that make sense, Chris?
Yeah, that does make, well, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, yeah, I didn't whether you agree, I just meant if.
Yeah, no, I I I don't agree, but uh, you know, I I just wanna be clear that in other words, what you're saying is you want to cut a significant amount of mass out of the project by making some of the buildings one-story, some of the buildings two-story and others three or four-story. Is that correct?
So right now it's a monotonous three-story straight across the top seven buildings. So what I'm trying to do is add in that height variation. Um, if you recapture space by adding a fourth story, I'm open to that. Um, but I guess what I'm getting at is, right, it's just three-story, three-story, three-story times seven. Um, so I I guess what I'm trying to do is give a concrete example of what would bring me much closer to approving a project and that's, that's it for me. It's it's some variation. Like again, I I appreciate the work on the exterior of the buildings, making them look different. And I commented that I actually appreciated Susan's um, one of her um, points of making one building all the same. So it actually adds more differentiation from from the outside. Um, and then now I'm just talking about in terms of the seven monotonous three-story buildings, like let's add in some height variation and that would get me a long way.
And your comments are with regard to what aspect of the LWRP?
So I think there's numerous aspects of the LWRP um that go into um the look of the buildings. Um, and I think in particular, let's see, I know at least in section A or finding one, we had a big discussion on buildings being monotonous. Um, you know, that's, that's, that that's one issue. I mean, I I don't think I'm here to uh, I'm not here this meeting to go through each and every element of the LWRP. But you know, you guys gave us an ask at our la- our last meeting, that is to come with concrete examples. And this for me is a concrete example.
Right.
I I would just add to that, Chris. Chris, I'll just add to that in paragraph three, policy one point one, it says, new construction projects will include design details which respond to the community's architectural heritage and character. New construction will be done in accordance with the existing historical patterns of the area. Such patterns include walkable village streets, on-street parking, sidewalk streets, buildings which address the public realm, blah, blah, blah. And then it gets into some siding and characteristics, specifically meaning the patterns of development in the village of Pittsburgh or in Pittsburgh in general do not have consistent, monotonous roof lines. I think that by itself is enough to support John's opinion.
Well, I do wanna, and and maybe it's not a dis- a discussion for tonight, but I want to make the board aware, and I'm sure Mindy will, when it comes to this decision time, but it it it's important in this feedback stage that that we're focused on what the LWRP requirements in the code actually are. And and uh, section G is is what you have to determine consistency with. And there's fifteen items. Dave, you started right off with with number one, which I think is the most broad and and covers a lot of this project. But what it says is determine consistency with the design character or design uh policies stated in section five of the LWRP. And there's, I think what you're looking at is section three of the LWRP. Which is what is summarized in the fifteen uh elements set forth in section one, two, one dash five G of the code, which is what you have to determine consistency with. But so the design principles start uh in section five and does talks about respecting scale, patterns and details and relate buildings and sites to the canal front, create a continuity of interest. Um, incentives for investment. But so I think what Chris's concern is, is that we're getting a little bit towards what we would like, not what what's required by code.
Well, I think that you're, Chris, if if you don't mind, I I think I disagree with you. I think that at this point, what's happened is that this board has taken a very hard look at the requirements in the LWRP. Uh, Chris has specifically asked for uh feedback, you know, stuff he can sink his teeth into stuff that the architects and the engineers can um work with. When it's time for this board to deliberate, the um this application, this board will be focusing on the specific factors to guide their deliberations. But at this time in the process, I think that the time would be much better spent going over some of the bigger picture issues that the board has been focusing on today, rather than trying to um tie up the comments with the specific policy guidelines in the LWRP right now. So you know, I mean, if you guys want to proceed, I think it's, you know, and you want to have some solid feedback, you're getting the feedback that you've been asking for. I think would be helpful to hear um the applicants, experts, just, you know, if you can at this point, or if you want to wait until our next meeting, you know, comment on what you've heard.
Hold on, I'm.
I'm sorry.
I I'd like to comment. Yeah, that'd be great, I think. Um, so just to start, um I don't disagree with the concepts that, you know, Susan and David and John are putting forth. You know, I think we're actually on the same page as far as the objectives. We just, I think, need to be on the same page in terms of how do we get there? And in some cases, I think your comments are good, and I think your comments would get us to a a good place, right? In other cases, I just have a different opinion about what will produce the correct result. So um can I share my, can I share my screen? I won't be showing anything other than the documents we've submitted, but it might be helpful. We're looking at the same images at the same time. Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm I'm good with that, Dorothy. Can you accommodate that?
I just.
I won't, um like I said, I won't be showing anything that you haven't seen before. It'll just help us, uh. Oh, wait, did I, maybe I messed that up.
Wow.
Are you seeing my screen? It's very busy, right?
We've got a lot of projects going on.
Oh, there's a lot going on here around here. Yeah, that's right. So now you might see uh the north elevation of building one, is that? Is that true?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. So you know, with regard to John's comment, I might be working myself, you know, work backwards here and eventually get to some of Susan's comments, which are, I think are a little easier for me to relate to in some respects. But so here's building one. And you know, John saying, well, maybe one of these buildings should be all two-story and one should be all three-story. But I think to some degree, don't take this the wrong way. I think that kind of misses the point, because what we're trying to do is say that building one is not a building. It's a series of maybe six or eight buildings. When you look at building one, you shouldn't think that's a building. You should think that is a composition of, it's a streetscape. It's a neighborhood. It's a community. It's it's not a building. So we've got two-story and three-story buildings, both in the east-west direction and in the north-south direction. So there's a building behind the north elevation that actually faces to the south. There's buildings east and west. So if we were to make this entire building, that's whatever it is, a hundred and eighty feet long, or I don't know how long it is. One story. I think we're going in the exactly wrong direction. The kind of pedestrian scale that the village of Pittsburgh has requires variety at a much quicker interval than a hundred and eighty feet. We need to do things every, I don't know, fifty, sixty feet, so that that's what this is trying to do. Set up that kind of texture, pattern, scale that is about the village. And if we, if we think of this as seven buildings, even though I know we're talking about it as seven buildings, if we think about it in terms of seven buildings compositionally, this project will fail. It will just totally fail, because we're gonna have seven relatively big you know, volumes out there that aren't contextual to the village. We gotta look at this at a much closer and say, okay, we've got variety here. We don't necessarily need variety. Like if if all building one is two stories and all building three is is three stories, that's exactly where we don't want to go. And I would argue that even front to back, north to south, if we made this all one height from north to south, we have gables and flat roofs that are out of scale with the kind of village character. I mean.
So so work with me here. Go back up to those images that you were at.
Yeah, I was just showing you the side only because again, if you put a gable over this whole uh building, front to back, you're gonna end up with elements that are out of scale. It's much better to say there's a building on the south, there's a building on the north and they are abutted. Just like they are abutted on Main Street or just like two buildings are 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 butted up against each other at Shane Place. I'll I'll go back for you. But.
Okay, so so you brought up a good, you 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 brought up a great point is that we're working with kind of seven big masses of buildings and you're.
There's seven, there there's seven compositions of buildings, just like when you walk down Main Street, there's a group of buildings. Then there's an alley, then there's another group of buildings. You see them all as one street. They just happen to be attached in some locations and detached in others. And for our development, you should think of it the same way. The fact that some are attached and some are detached shouldn't really be part of of what you think about. It's really about this, as Chris said, a series of events or the streetscape or how the pedestrian moves along these things. The fact that the fact that there's a gap and that sometimes there's a gap in a little building or a gap in a bigger building is just because there's gaps at different intervals, not necessarily because the the buildings are bigger or smaller, because as you move along, you'll find that the building three has similar-sized elements to building one, it just has fewer elements, right? So it's not like we're changing the scale of the buildings, we're just changing how often a gap's happened. So you can't, if 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 we think about this as seven buildings and try and compose seven buildings, we're gonna fail. And uh, you know, but but going back to some of the things that Susan said, you know, the tripartite scheme that we have in. You know, the tripartite scheme that we have in many of these buildings is. It's a nice arrangement for us, it solves some planning problems, it kind of creates terraces where we like them and groups in the gather nicely. I think, thinking about it now, there is probably a way to do a building that is a fifty-fifty instead of a. You know, thirty-three, thirty-three, or whatever, you know, so we could probably do a building that addressed it differently and split it up in a different way, I think that would be. Probably helpful if we could do that, and to several people's points. And we had this conversation with the historic board as well. Initially, that board was very fixated on, we couldn't have. Larger buildings because it would be out of scale, and there was this constant interest in. This smaller texture, but to your point, and I think they came around to this at the very end as well. An exception. You know, all these little exceptions end up being. More of the same, so having a larger exception creates actually more variety, even if it's less variety within itself. That larger piece is larger variety, even though it has less variety within itself. So, I don't disagree with that, I think that's a good thing, and the fact that, like Shane Place has a coal tower going up. Maybe our, you know, coal towers is long and not tall, but but you don't want to do that to the to the point where. It's gonna degrade the pedestrian experience. But I think one of those buildings is manageable in the context of everything else, because it does provide relief, you know, so I think there are ways to get there. Susan, you also commented that, you know, we don't have maybe as many gables as you like, we we do have gables. You know, in the other direction on buildings one and five, we have, we could add more, and I'm I'm not. Adverse to that, I think keeping a roof scape that has got a lot of variety and has a lot of different things going on to kind of create that. Broken line on the skyline is super important, so I'm not adverse to, you know, trying to look for ways to do that. Same same with, you know, window varieties and looking for ways if we needed to, to, you know, augment that with clear stories or whatever. I just worry that, I'm not, again, not opposed to that, I give a four-story portion, I wouldn't suggest that any one of these buildings should be four stories high, I mean, building as in. Building one, or, you know, building seven, but could a portion of one of these be four-story size? I I think that'd be fine, although. The historic board was not supportive of that, and I do think. There's a way to get there without doing that, because if you keep in mind that we will have a few. One-story little garages, you know, or we'll have a little clubhouse, we'll have other elements on the site that are smaller in scale. Our three-story buildings. Could be the four-story building, and these clubhouses and garages could be the way to step it down and kind of create those larger. Transitions, right? So, I I guess I'm not against it, but but I'm not sure it's it's absolutely imperative. The other, I think, comment. Oh, about, you know, if we were to eliminate buildings, I I don't know about eliminate buildings. But I would certainly not advocate for spreading them out more. I think the pedestrian experience, there's a lot of green space on this site, way more than you have on Main Street or Shane Place. And the green space, I think, is in the right spots, it lines the canal, it creates, you know, a a tree lawn or a zone there where you walk. There is the additional space on the end toward Monroe, which maybe could be programmed, or, you know, add. Design elements to it to make it more of a destination. But spreading the buildings out, eliminating buildings to spread them out, I would suggest is not a good idea, I think it would degrade the pedestrian experience. If you weren't gonna build as many buildings, I just, I'm not advocating this, I would just not build anything on the far west end rather than spread them out, I don't think spreading them out would be would be good. And also related to that, I think, you know, I think there was also a comment about, you know, the LWRP is really looking for, you know. Projects to promote pedestrian access to, you know, either the canal or recreation, or just basically as a pedestrian experience for the village, and. Right now, of course, that's, this site isn't providing anything to anybody. So I would argue that, you know, this project, just by the very nature of it. And the way we've designed it is a huge benefit to that. Desire for access and experience along the canal that the LWRP is is trying to either promote or preserve. I could go.
Craig, on on that subject, could you just go into as much detail as you know offhand as to the. Public recreational opportunities that you perceive this site, including?
Yeah, I I could do something like that, I think, let's see here.
When you're done on this topic, I want to go back to the one, two and three stories.
Yeah, that's fine, so.
All right, never mind, never mind, go ahead.
No, you can continue, I just wanted to, go for it, I just wanted to get back to that, because I did have a chance to go back through the transcripts.
Yeah, so. I I don't think our our site development is advanced to the point where I can speak to all the ways that we can. Provide. Public benefit, you know, along the canal, and you can see on this site plan, you know, where we got this clubhouse located, which, you know, would be a smaller, you know, lower scale building. And, you know, the ability then to, you know, walk on a sidewalk along this kind of canal side of the development. It's all gonna be, you know, organized in such a way that it's gonna promote the use of the canal along that side. Now, is there other benches, other gazebos, are there like little places to sit and, you know, feed the ducks or something? We haven't gotten there, but I mean, there have to be all those types of things, and I would argue that those are the types of things that are gonna take this development. To the next level. And give it that additional level of interest and scale, I don't I don't think the buildings are lacking that. But obviously, we we intend to layer on, you know, additional. But public amenities, I guess, or or things within the public realm. The the kind of tree lawn that's there, obviously, is just kind of representational of where you start there, not not where you finish.
Well, and if if the board looks at the amended site plan application that we've submitted, that that's with TYLND now. There has been a lot of that development on the engineering side. You know.
That's true.
Bentshows, shows trash cans, shows sidewalks, green space, public docks, there is a gazebo on the. You know. On the plan, there's a walkway, boardwalk along the canal, so that would all be part of the public amenities.
And the clubhouse would be private to residents?
Most likely, yes, it's not been determined completely, but I believe that's always been the plan, is that the clubhouse would be.
And I I've not seen. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not, I've not seen anything with regards to what that looks like, is that correct?
Right.
That is correct, yeah, yeah, and I think. It doesn't seem like it should be as difficult to find ham and ground there, because it's, you know. Maybe because it's likely one or one and a half stories and. It doesn't have all the complexities about these other buildings, we're a little freer. I think with the kind of style there, it can be even a little quirky if it wants to be, because it's basically just a roof, you know, so.
Though, if if I may, I do believe that the pedestrian sidewalk, which grants canal access. Is in fact farther from the canal than the clubhouse, the clubhouse is direct to the canal, and then this comes in behind it. So, there's a little bit of, hey, that's our land, our land, or whatever, Ben, I I understand, but, I mean, these little things will work towards. It it, just one final question on seven before we get back to heights. Building seven, there was a time somebody had said, I think in December, that a building could not be built right on the canal. Because you gotta get a fire truck all over, all the way around it, so I do notice that the road doesn't go all the way around building seven. Is that because it's at the end of the drive that's permitted?
I can address that, David, this is Peter Vars. What the fire code requires is that we provide a fire access along one entire side of the building. So that is being provided along the railroad side of building seven. As long as we, and then we are required to provide a fire apparatus turnaround. Which is the hammerhead T turnaround that you see at the far end of the property. Excuse me, so that's, that's what was, how the fire code and the building code components of that are met with the building seven layout.
And would that suggest that a circular route is not a necessity, but rather a desired element of the. Site plan? From a fire, from a fire code perspective.
No, the the fire truck does have to be able to get into the site and then turn itself around.
That's the, that's the dead-end turnaround that already exists on the site plan, is that correct, Freda?
Correct, that meets the code requirement for the fire. There's there's two circulation items here for the the fire apparatus circulation. If you, which is, one is the roadway between building six and seven, you know, if you want to call it the loop. And then off that loop, we have the fire access road, fire lane, whatever term you want to use. To provide fire access, apparatus access to building seven, which is the roadway along the railroad side of building seven. As long as we provide the specified apparatus turnaround, which is at the far end.
And and the loop could just as well be between building five and six, instead of six and seven, or between four and five, and still be. Okay, from a fire code perspective.
I'd have to look at that, to be honest with you, because the reason why, David, is there is a. A distance for a, what you want to call a dead end. There is a maximum distance that you're allowed. Before you have to loop it back around.
And I ask these questions and lead up to something that comes later, but for now, I'm gonna defer if I could to John.
But David, I I would want to just comment also on your question about. Public access and whatnot. The the amended site plan application, as Chris Nadler referenced, and even going back to the approved site plan. There was a lot of thought, effort and. Information put in to address that, and there, the the site plan component of this as it relates to the public. There was a conscientious decision made, and it actually goes all the way back to the original R5 zoning and the criteria that was established by the village. And that comes down to the complete street design, the street, the parallel parking, the tree lawn area, the sidewalks. That, you know, this was not going to be your, you know, subdivision development road, this was to have a distinct. Pedestrian experience that would link it with all parts of the other public sidewalk system throughout the village. That it was a continuation, but also, so that's why we have the green space between the buildings, between the sidewalks, between the roadways. But also, you had mentioned, yes, there is the sidewalk that goes on. On the street side of of the clubhouse, but off of that, and it's off of that sidewalk system, there is. I believe at least three points of access that you come off that sidewalk and then get along the boardwalk. And docking that will be constructed along the canal, so the public will have. Canal access, there's, and if if you, the site plan designs that we have done. Have seating areas, covered seating areas, sort of like what you see up by Label Seven and Shane Place. You know, there's that, you know, like that pavilion type thing. There's there, there's gonna be fishing access, so there is public access to the canal being provided with the site plan and design elements.
Okay, thank you. John, you want to go back to your comments?
Oh, yeah. Craig, you, Craig, can you put that picture again, so at least we can both be talking with context?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, perfect, thanks. So, you know, okay, you, I understand you don't like my comment of having a three, a two and a one-story building. Mainly because you're building to maximize maximize usage, right? This is a, this is a commercial endeavor, not a, not a public.
No, no, the reason I don't like it is because I don't want to build a hundred and eighty-foot-long stretch of two-story buildings. Or one-story buildings, or three-story buildings, we've got, you know, if you look at these, like I said, as seven buildings. You're suggesting that we should build a hundred and eighty feet of the same height. And I'm disagreeing with that, I'm saying we should vary the height much more frequently than you're suggesting.
Okay, so 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 then work with me there, because right now I still see three-story, a three-story building. It's all, it's all three stories, right? I I I get it, you have some level variation in between, but that's to make a deck or a patio. So, 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 again, is there, is it possible then, so go back up, let's go back up to the view.
Yeah, I'll come back to that in a second, then.
Yeah, I I know you're gonna use that in the side view as a point to point out the white part over here, but. So then, so then, is it possible to then, because you don't want me to think of this as one building, right? So then, can we have a two-story portion, can we have more level variation, it's real level variation, straight through? Can can, can part of the black go down to two and part of the the other part of the gray go up to four, I don't know, like, level. And and to the point, Chris, I I completely get it, you have to maximize space, this is a commercial endeavor, I totally get that, so. I mean, there has to be some middle ground where we can.
Right, but but still, my my argument is the same in that, as you look at it from the side, there's plenty of depth here. To step the buildings, if I'm standing down at the canal over here where my cursor is, if you can see that, and I look up. And I, this this corner of the building is gonna block my view, I'm not even gonna see this building back here, I won't even be able to see it. So if I can't see it, then effectively when I'm out here, I see a three-story building in gray, I see a two-story building in white next to it. I don't see this, if I do see a little bit of it, it's a totally different building, it's the next building, it's not the same building. And it will add interest and variety, it's not gonna add monotony or continuity, which is what we don't want. If I make this gray building the same height as this white building, now I've got like a sixty-foot-long box at two stories. And I've got the inability to do a gable roof that's in the right scale. Because the gable roof would be, you know, very, very big, or I've got a very big flat roof, so. These, do doing what you're suggesting, I believe. I I really believe is counter to the goals that you have, I think we're trying to, we're trying to give you a solution. That achieves what you're asking for, I don't think what you're suggesting is gonna get you what you want.
So, so that's why I said, work with me here, because I'm hearing your point on, you don't want to make. An entire building that looks like several buildings, all two stories or all one story. So, my my ask to you then was, then, in the give and take, proverbial, I can't say it today, tonight. Again, is it possible for you to add in that height variation, so again, it's not all. Three stories in red, three stories in gray, three stories in gray, and another three stories with patio in the blue light, right? So. No, that's not architecturally appropriate.
I I didn't quite follow that, can you do that one more time?
Okay, sure, so. My initial ask coming near was, okay, I see seven buildings. That are all three stories, and, you know, you came back and said, well, I don't want to build seven buildings that are all two stories or one story, right? And so my, then, and me hearing, hearing your your views as an architect, I'm not an architect, right? I'm an attorney, and an engineer, so me going back to you was, hey, then is there something else we can do? So, if we're looking at this one building that is, you know. Designed to look like several buildings, I get that, I get that, my ask to you is that, then, within those. You know, what you're saying look like four buildings or five buildings, however you want to slice it up.
I'd say it's eight or seven, or whatever, it's some number of buildings.
Whatever it may be, my ask then to you is that, is it possible then to add in that height variation I'm asking for? So, is it possible that, let's just break it up into four sections right now?
Yeah.
For, just to make the conversation easy, right? On the far left of all of our screens is kind of like a pinkish-white, pinkish-white. Then, next to the right is a gray building with a white piece on the top, then there's another building that's all gray. Then there's another building that's all gray, and then there's the fourth portion that's blue and gray with, again, the white portion at the bottom two floors. My ask then is that possible that, for example, that there's variation between those four sections in height? So I don't see three floors all across. And I'm going to disagree with you on, I get it, if you're standing ten feet away from the building and looking straight up, sure, you may not see the quote building behind it, but I think if you're, you know, eighty-five feet away and at the clubhouse or actually on the canal path looking up, you're going to see it. So.
Yeah, so, so I guess.
Understand some of the, hang on a sec, Craig, because I, I'm an attorney who deals with architects and engineers and has to have things explained to them. And, and when I saw this, I, I similarly to you, John, thought about, well, there, you know, if you put a ruler on the top, just like you said, it, you know, they all max out at three stories. Um, and Chris DiMarzo, who has the design experience and Craig and Dirk
Sure.
And to explain to me more, many times, more than once, um, that it's, we're looking at a two-dimensional picture. It's not a three-story building across the board. These are two and three-story buildings. The third story portion on the far left, for example, is an entire building back. Um, so that, so our architects edit that in, but maybe Craig, you can sort of.
If you look at the side view, I'm going to see that patio. I'm going to see that deck area. Yeah, I. I, I get that, but it's still, it's still a three-story mass. It's a three-story mass. I'm just asking, you know, can you push a portion of it down? And if you're trying to recapture that space, push a portion up. I'm just asking for that.
I, I, I guess, I'll give you, well, I'll give you my response for what it's worth.
Okay. It wouldn't be architecturally appropriate.
So, so it, it wouldn't be as nice. But I'll tell you, I'll tell you why I think that's the case. This site, as we all know, is long and narrow, and it only has space for a single line of buildings, right? And a community typically isn't only linear. It typically has, you know, multiple directions. You can go east, west, you can go north, south. You know, there's blocks in both directions. That's not always the case, but in, in most instances, even Shane Place, um, you know, there's buildings in many cases behind other buildings. There's a certain amount of depth there. Like the coal tower is behind the label, whatever the brewery is called, I don't know. Um, and, and so on. And we don't have that opportunity. And I think is to our advantage, even though we don't have a street between the front buildings and the back buildings, the buildings that face the tracks and the buildings that face the canal. It's still better for us to imagine these as two sides of a city block. Like, if you're, if you're in a city like Manhattan, right, and you walk down whatever, twenty, twenty-second street, and then you turn the corner, you walk down twenty-third street. Many of those buildings are, I mean, there's a, there's a rear yard in many cases, but in some cases they're actually not. And the buildings that you see on twenty-third are different than the buildings you see on twenty-second. They all back up into each other. You're just seeing them from two different streets and the, the, the rear yard isn't part of the public realm. Nobody thinks about the, that as part of the, it's not part of the public realm. All you do is, are you're experiencing buildings on the north and you're building, experiencing buildings on the south. And they're different buildings. They're part of the same quote block, but they're all different buildings. And that's what this is. This is basically buildings on a block, some facing north, some facing south. And I am extremely confident that we'll be much more successful if we think about it that way. Than if we think about it as a building that runs through the block and goes and has, the building has a presence on the north and the south. The, the additional complexity, the additional interest, the additional opportunities that you get, the, the scale of it. Everything is better if you do that. And I, I really think, like Chris was saying a minute ago, the perspective you get from the ground, you know, the, what you see as the height of a three-story building that's close to you versus what you see as the height of a three-story building that's sixty feet further back. Those two cornice lines or eve lines, they, they bear no resemblance to each other in terms of their, their height in, in your, in your sightline. I, I just, you're not going to perceive them as being the same height, because they're at an entirely different angle of view. So, I really think we're trying to do what you want. I, I, I wish, you know, I can make you see that, but I, I don't think what you're asking for is going to improve the development.
From all perspective?
What's that?
Never mind. It's okay.
I can prove the development from a, a competing.
I'm talking about from a, from LWRP goals perspective. I'm not talking about from monetarily or anything else. I'm talking about purely, well, you can aesthetics or LWRP, which are aligned, obviously. They're both trying to create pedestrian-oriented, you know, patterns, scales that are consistent and comparable or compatible with the village, those types of things. I'm not saying that some of the comments that were made tonight, like some of the ones I referenced that Susan had made. I'm not saying some of those things couldn't help. Do I think this is perfect or the best it can be? No, we could always probably work on and find ways to improve it. And some of the suggestions, even possibly the four-story one, I think, you know, and maybe other larger variations could be okay. But like I said, I think the site itself provides us with some opportunities to get that additional level of variation that takes us from the scales that you see here to an even more human scale and mitigates, makes, makes our three-story buildings essentially the four-story building. Um, but as I said before, making a building larger, uh, like one of these subdivisions of, of a building larger to create less variety, so we have more variety, I think is a good idea. And I, I shared that with the, like I said, with the historic review board, and I think they started to come around to that as well.
Craig, I have a question. Um, so with regards to building one that we have in front of you now, and appreciate you sharing your screen here. Uh, this is perhaps um, indicative of my favorite of the four larger buildings excluding building number seven. Um, one question I have though is in regards to this. If you look at the left and the right side being as they are, uh, the white, um, two stories. You know, one of the things that I'm seeing is a fairly consistent, you know, it's broken up in quarters or it's broken up in thirds. Some of these buildings seem almost as though one way to reduce the sense of size. Uh, but yeah, stop there, for example, would be great. You can almost visually uh, consider a vertical line between the left most gray section and a vertical line, the right most white section. And by breaking it into eights or sixths instead of, um, you know, thirds like you see here. I, would that work to minimize the effect of size and scale by trying to create different visual interfaces? Um, maybe not necessarily changing the material components as much as, I mean, maybe you could as well. It, has that been considered?
I'm going to know. Um, so, I, I guess, I don't, I don't think that's been considered, but you know, this I think is getting back to Susan's point about this kind of tripartite kind of scheme that, you know, worked, worked for us in terms of the way to organize these buildings. But there are ways, I think, that we could address this differently. So there was more three stories on the left and more two stories on the right. You know, as opposed to either sides or middle. You know, we're, we're kind of like in this kind of mode for, for good reasons that we either are doing sides or, or middle with the um, with the, with the two and three stories. But like, like, again, this one goes back to, you know, it's on the sides versus the middle. Could we do a entirely left versus entirely right solution? I think we could.
While we're on this, yeah, so this is another good example, that middle section. Sometimes when I look at this building in particular, um, I think to myself, we've got a building that was built in the background, and then they put a facade across the entire front. And it kind of almost looks like a, a, a western cardboard pop-up, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The entire thing going across the front. And it really, this speaks a lot to Susan's comments about windows and the persistency of them. Um, and this is true across all the buildings. What we don't see in the village anywhere, um, are a, and this has a lot to do with uh, what's written in the LWRP in terms of the village vernacular. Uh, but one of the things, and we talked about this before, the variation, and you're talking about this being um, pedestrian scale and, and, and walk-friendly where your experience as you go along changes. And I would just venture to say that in large part due to the entrances being consistent, the windows being consistent, uh, the plane at which they're on for each building being consistent, uh, that's very unlike anything, uh, that's throughout the village. So one of the ways to possibly move, move it away from its own identity is to actually steal from each larger building its own identity and create unique opportunities within the subsections of these large buildings to be unique in and of themselves. Yeah.
No, I think I understand. And I mean, you know, again, a couple of things. I, I trip myself up when I talk about these things sometimes too, and you know, when we look at a building like this, we got to remind ourselves that there is another building right next door and that as you walk along these things, the perception of where one building starts, starts and one, where one stops, and what's part of the building versus not part of the building, rather than just a streetscape. We got to make sure we're thinking about it correctly, because even though you see this as a singular composition right now, and it may have some issues, once it's in the context of the other buildings, you're not going to see it as independently and you won't recognize that these are two sides with the middle, because the sides will start to merge with the next building and then those will just be two, two buildings flanking an alley or something like that. So it's, it's just very deceptive to look at it this way. I, I don't.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, um, right now you've got, each of the larger buildings has its own, in a way, identity, a little bit. But they're consistent enough that it feels like one identity.
Yeah, I, I understand. And I, I think to that point, we might be able to do better where the left side of this building shouldn't have anything to do with the right side and we should, you know, there's this.
Or pocket them, meaning take the first two buildings. Again, I'll, I'll venture to say you eliminate the seventh building. And if then within these two subsets, two larger buildings and a smaller one, maybe five and six, if you do a nice job with the designing elements and the, the smaller one. Can you create little pocket identities where they kind of work together?
Yeah, right. I, I think that.
By sub, sorry, sorry to keep going, but by dividing out those buildings separately and creating pocket identities of some degree of inconsistency and consistency, by being different enough from each other, you remove the element that perhaps I'm most concerned about, which is the project has one identity. And by creating these uniquenesses of designs within the different uh, pocket identity groupings, um, it takes away from me saying, oh, that's that development. Instead, it's, oh, isn't that neat? Oh, look at what they've done with this building. When I say building, I mean one subcomponent of the larger building. Whereas right now, it's kind of like one, you, you think of it all together. And I know as you walk, it may be a little different. Again, with building one, I think that's more the case. As you get into building here, building uh, that was five you were at, and then two, these, I think, are some opportunities to improve upon, uh, to again, try to create pocket identities that are maybe a little bit consistent and then transitions to something a little different, uh, but still and introduces many of the concepts and, and components that Susan's been talking about. I think we could really have, you know, something nicer.
Well, and there may be opportunities even, you know, to create a conversation between the end of this quote building and the end of this building, right? So these two buildings are, you know, inflected or basically both looking at the same alleyway. So is there a conversation, more of a conversation that you go on between these two materialities or buildings to make them part of a family? So that they kind of divorce themselves from what they're attached to and start having a conversation more with what they're not attached to. Again, you know, you can find architectural examples of this, you know, in, in cities where, you know, there's essentially two buildings that form some sort of more kind of gateway type development. Now, because this is commercial vernacular, you don't want to get too literal with that kind of stuff. It needs to be a little bit more ad hoc. But I, I understand some of your points.
To, to that point on the ad hoc, the ad hoc would never have the same elevation of the windows across the same larger building, right?
Yeah, e- e- except, you know, when you look at this, this commercial and this kind of commercial vernacular or industrial vernacular, those buildings, you know, be it whether it's uh, the the flour mill or whether it's buildings in other canal communities, they're pretty relentless, boy. They just took a, a standard window that they could make over and over again, and they just, you know, line them up and.
The flour mill photo though on page, uh, it's the second to last page of the um, provided information for tonight. If you don't mind.
Oh, I, I don't know if I can access that. I, I don't.
Yeah, I think it's just one up or one down, maybe.
Oh, of this?
Uh, of what you provided tonight.
Oh, I don't, I, I can go to that. I don't have that handy, actually.
It had the flour mill directly over the backside of building one, the south elevation of building one. And uh, just counting across the flour mill had uh, eight windows, three levels. And in the middle section of building one, the, you have eight windows with three sections. It's maybe, you know, size and scale are a little different. Um, but essentially, um, you know, I understand and recognize the flour mill concept, and I do think what's kind of neat, if you could, uh, go to building uh, five, if you don't mind. So imagine building five without a middle and extending those roof lines, uh, the gables over to the front sections as well. Having, and again, this is a sizing and scale thing. I, I initially came in, said, um, you know, maybe without six and seven, but what if you truncate five a little bit? Have something different that's than building one and two, and then some part of, in components of building, uh, six can come in, right? Um, that's building seven. Let's not even um, go there. Um, and then one question on these buildings with the, the sloped roofs, where does that concept come from? It's, I, every time I look at those, I kind of think, what's going on there?
Yeah, I think it's, it's just uh, one more way to create variation and some more, well, I guess will be idiosyncratic elements. I think we can probably find examples, not maybe exactly like this, but of these kind of shed roofs that are, you know, just kind of doing their own thing. But it, I agree, it's not something that is a kind of uh, something that you think of as an iconic image of, of the village or something like that. It's not typical. It's atypical for sure.
I, I do like the idea though that you, what you said before, think of the front and back as like blocks. And you're walking around the block and what do you see? And you got all these buildings that kind of just got all built up together and they're all touching and they're all unique and different. And I guess my ask, if you particularly on not one, but some of the others, make it feel like that a little bit more.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good way to think about it, because I mean, that's how we're thinking about it. And I do think that's how it's going to be more successful, because we've got to create a, a variety in a fairly, you know, compressed or can, can, uh, restricted area. And that's what the pedestrian experience really uh, celebrates anyway. I mean, you know, there's no downside to doing that. I, I think, you know, if these things run through the block, it's, it's just, then you have fronts and backs. You don't have fronts and fronts. We're trying to make fronts and fronts, you know? Um, I mean, this building that faces the railroad tracks, you know, which has this gable over the top of it, is one of those buildings that, you know, someone could say, wow, this is just, you know, too much of a good thing. It's too consistent, too uniform. But to me, whether we have something like this facing the canal or not, I don't know, but this is the lack of variety. To Susan's point that creates variety. I don't know if there's other ways to do that. You can't do this on every building, of course, but if this was building five, to me, that's a great way to, to make it very distinct from
Right.
Something else, you know, like, 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 I'll get there eventually.
What I'm trying to do is steal, uh, take away a little bit.
Yeah.
Singular identity of just this project and try to have it be more a part of the village experience, the Pittsburgh experience. And by doing all of the, the, these things. And by doing all of the, these things that we're talking about tonight, I think we're absolutely moving more in that direction. Um, and the, the, the scale of the project relative to the design. I, I think it's easier for me anyway, personally, to reach a point of success here. Perhaps without building seven and everything we've talked about tonight, maybe that brings back in some of six. Or maybe it takes, uh, the smaller buildings and you've got a couple of them in different positions and posturing through, you know. Uh, maybe you have a little quad of four story smaller ones and then you push out the bigger ones and, and break one down a little bit, right? So just some things here. We're maybe freeing up a little bit of the space by having seven not be there. Uh, you can gap out a little bit instead of just the two ones in the middle. Maybe you can have a quad of the smaller ones. And instead of two stories, it could be four. And then you break down number five and just have it be the barn-like elements rather than, um, sort of that Western facade that we first see, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Tie in. You know, listen, board members. Thank you for your time and your good thoughts tonight. Uh, you know, John mentioned a little while ago, middle ground. I, I don't know if there's middle ground. I mean, I'm listening to what you're saying. Um, and dying to find some middle ground, but. Um, you know, it sounds like, you know, this is our. One hundred and seventieth meeting and what I heard again was too big, too much. Cut building six, cut building five. Chop floors off. I mean, I, I'm trying to find the middle ground. But with regard to the LWRP, if all your comments. You know, if we take a building out or cut floors out and make one story or two story, does that make it consistent with the LWRP? Uh. I don't know.
I mean, I, Chris. I, I think that's a little bit of a misrepresentation, you know, what we've done. It hasn't, I think it's been, you know, pretty concrete. About, um, you, you know, things that can be, can be done. Uh, seven is, seven is a problem. But we're, we're not, um, hacking away. We are, um, really trying to. Um, uh, use, you know, what you, what you have and make some differences that achieves. You know, kind of this, um, uh, non-pattern pattern. Um, you know, which the guidelines ask us, ask us to do. So, um, I, I thought this was pretty, you know, pr- productive.
I, I don't see how it's productive in the least. I mean, uh, uh, let me, let me repeat that. Let me rephrase that. Very productive. I appreciate all your, all your feedback. But what I'm going to take away from it is just what I said and, and it's, it's Dave's words. David's words were. You know, maybe if we take out building six and seven, uh. Then, you know, he, maybe that'll get him to a point where he still might be happy. John said. He wants one floors on buildings, two floors on buildings. You know, these are major reductions in the building.
I asked you to work with me, so.
I'm dying to, John, dying to, but if, if you're.
I said, three, two, one, your, your, um, architect came back and said, look, this is why it doesn't make sense. And I said, well. Then work with me. How do we make it so it doesn't look like three straight across the top? Can you push something down at the end or in the middle? And I'm like, I know, know my design is best. You don't know what you're talking about. And, and that's fine. Look, we can, we can agree to disagree, but. At least, at least, you know, we came into this meeting with concrete examples. You may not like them, but at least, you know. We, we, we came with your ass, concrete examples.
I, I, I'm appreciative of that. What I'm saying is if. Two or more of you want wholesale changes in this plan, I can't do it. If you, you know, Susan gave some great comments, change some heights, change some windows. Um, you know, those things we could probably modify. You've all mentioned four stories. I'd love to do four stories, but the HPB will not let me do four stories. So I'm stuck. You know, I wish all of you guys were here in two thousand eight when the, when the project was annexed into the village. And that was the time to do all this stuff, but we're really kind of far down the road. You know, it, we, we, all these things need to be considered. In the context of the special permit that we have. With, in the R five zone that we have. In the approved site plan that we have in the, and, and maybe take into consideration. The Architectural Review Board who's been working on this for four months with me and has gotten to a point where they're good with the project. Aside from modifying building number seven.
And this is this board's second or third meeting.
Yeah, but.
Not four, not a hundred and seventieth. Second.
It sounds like we can't get a determination of LWRP consistency. From this board without Chris spending another hundred and fifty thousand bucks. PJS and BME to redesign the project. And that's okay. That's, you know.
I, I don't know that that's true.
Yeah, I think that's an exaggerated, um, estimation. Um, I've heard that some things, some things are doable. And, and, you know, so you, you made some terrific changes. Um, after, uh, the, um, HPB commentary. I, I would think this board could, you know, have, uh, you know, kind of see some of the suggestions that we've made, you know. Realized in a, in a rendering.
What? What are you saying?
That some of the.
You got some feedback tonight and that this board would like to see what you do with it.
Okay, so again. You, you made, you made some comments, but I can't get past David's comment that he wants to remove building six and seven. It's fifty units. Project doesn't work. So, I mean. Where do I go from there? And then.
You, where, where you go from there, Mr. DiMarzo, is that there are four board members, not one. And. If you can take the comments that have been offered to you tonight in, you know, in good faith. This board's worked really hard to give you the concrete feedback that you've asked for. See what you, you guys can do with it. You've got, you know, some of the best people in the state working on this project. Let's see what they can do with it.
Okay, um, so tomorrow, Chris and I will sit down and, and go over your suggestions. And again. Uh, thank you for your feedback. Chris is going to have to make a decision with his brother on whether or not to, to start a redesign. Um, and we will, uh, absolutely let you know probably by, uh, Monday at the latest, um. For, you know, to come back on the twenty-seventh. Um, for a decision either way, I guess. Um, I'm assuming. If Chris, if we don't submit a redesign. You'll be ready to.
Again, I, I, this is where I said, help me out, help me out. What I'm hearing is, is wholesale redesign.
I think that you should talk to your professionals after the meeting is over. To find out what they heard. I'm not sure that you're all hearing the same thing.
That's good advice, Mindy. Thank you. I think that's exactly what we will do, but I just want to. Um, make sure if, if there are no changes made. My understanding is we'll come back on the twenty-seventh and. Will not get a determination.
I don't know. I mean, we still need to have a, a complete application for the site plan before they can start the deliberations on. The LWRP.
Well, you know, I'm quite certain the code doesn't say anything about needing a complete application of site plan. We have a site plan. An amended plan that shows the locations of everything like that stuff. Um. The LWRP code doesn't say anything about site plan application. Um, and it doesn't say that you need an engineer's determination of. Something completeness.
Yeah, Chris, I mean.
Now we're just sort of dragging it out for the sake of dragging it out.
No, no, nobody wants to drag it. Believe me, this, this board has much better things to do as, as do you and your clients. Village Code one twenty-one, five D and five F. Both say that the planning board shall require. The applicant to submit completed applications. As well as any other information that seems necessary. You don't do the LWRP in a vacuum. It has to be, you know, tied to and associated with an underlying application. But, you know, let's not argue about this now. Let's see.
I will let. Who can tell me what information they need to get a complete application so that we can vote on something?
Yeah, I mean, I, I've been in communication with TY Lynn. And, um, I, I understand that they received some information as recently as yesterday. And more information today from, um, from your experts. When TY Lynn has everything that it needs to evaluate. Um. The completeness of the application, they will let the village trustees know what, the amount of money they need to have in escrow. In order to commence the review.
Oh, I think I see what you're trying to say, Mindy. You're saying completed applications means we need a. Determination of completeness. On it from TY Lynn on a site plan application. That's not what that says.
That's not, and that's not what I'm saying.
The complete thing that we've submitted to apply.
It needs to be sufficiently complete for you. It's, it's, it's not sufficient. I don't know whether it's sufficiently complete for review and I'm not going to make that decision.
Who makes that determination?
TY Lynn is going to make.
Should make that determination.
I beg your pardon?
I said, who makes the determination when the application is complete?
TY Lynn will make that determination.
Will make the determination that the LWRP application is complete?
No, the, the planning board makes that determination.
Okay, so.
But the planning board does not have.
Information do you need to make a determination on the LWRP?
We need a complete site plan application.
I, I, that's maybe what you think, but I'm asking the planning board. You just said they make that determination. And show me in the code where it says, I need a complete application for.
We're not going to argue with you, Mr. DiMarzo. And if you're going to persist in trying to examine this board, we're just going to end the meeting. This is not the purpose of the meeting.
I'm trying to get to a point where we can vote. We need a determination, consistency, up or down.
And you'll get a determination, but we have a complete application and this board has. Okay, um, Dorothy, can we close the meeting now or Susan, you want to make a motion?
Give, give me one second. Look. We're not trying, nobody's trying to delay this. We want to make this decision as fast as practically possible. What we're trying to do is have an opportunity for us to discuss. To discuss changes we think would be beneficial to your application. And look, just like Mindy said. Chris, uh, I guess Chris and Chris, right? You guys can go, both go back, you know, go back to home base. And decide, do we want to make any changes, wholesale changes or none? And, and whatever it may be, right? Make sure TY Lynn has the right stuff and, and we'll go, right? We'll go through the process. This today was, again, that opportunity for us to have that discussion. You know, we came with concrete examples, you know? I'm not saying you have to like them, um, but, you know, we don't need to argue about. These, these details. Nobody's trying to delay this. We will get this done as soon as.
I guess, I guess I do need to put on the record, though. It's been, this process started three months ago. We, we submitted this stuff three months ago and now we're, we're just starting to wait to see when TY Lynn gets it done.
I, I disagree. You've asked, you've asked for us to have discussions and that's what we've been doing. And if you didn't want to have discussions and wanted to go straight to a vote, we could have done that, but, um, instead we took time. Out of everybody's schedule to engage, interact and talk about a massive project that affects the village. And that's what we've done.
Okay, John, let me ask you a question.
Yep.
What information do you need or does the board need with regard to the LWRP to make a determination?
Mindy, TY Lynn are going to figure that out.
Yep.
What does TY Lynn have to do with the application with the LWRP? They're not engaged in the LWRP. They're engaged in the site plan approval.
Susan, do you want to, uh, make?
No, hang on, Mindy. This is a planning board determination. The entire section one twenty-one says the planning board shall determine, not the planning board attorney. And it would make more sense for you and me to, to work this out, but. This is something we need to be asking.
Yeah, I mean, this argument really is not advancing your client's best interests. I think it's time for us to. I would recommend that the chair. Right, make a motion to.
How are we going to find out what is necessary for complete application? Because the planning board is the only one who can tell us that and they, yeah.
Okay, so I.
And they send us a letter, maybe?
I, I moved.
I will send you a letter, Chris.
No, 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 not from you, Mindy, because we need it from the planning board. Three of the five.
You don't, wait, wait, you don't get to decide who sends what. Right, it just doesn't work that way.
Our attorney operates on behalf of the board. Come on, Chris. This is absurd. That's an absurd argument.
I, thank you, everyone. I think it's been, uh, mostly a, um, collegial, thoughtful. Um, productive meeting. I still stand by that. Um, I think we want to work together. And, um, I think that should, uh, wrap it up tonight. So I move to adjourn the meeting.
Before we close, can we set a, can we set another meeting up?
Sure.
Are we confirmed for the twenty-seventh? For the LWRP and can we hear the site plan approval on the twenty-seventh?
We just had that discussion. We need information from TY Lynn as to whether the application is complete. If it is complete. It will be noticed and put on the agenda. Susan, I'm sorry, you were interrupted.
No, at the, and we'll do it at the, um, the earliest time possible, giving posting requirements.
Well, with regard to the site plan.
Mr. DiMarzo, you're out of line. This is not your meeting.
Regarding the site plan approval. So can we schedule a meeting for the site plan approval? We've submitted our documents months ago.
Uh, so there's a, I, uh, made a motion and I'm looking for a second to close this meeting. To adjourn the meeting. Do, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks. Dorothy, could you take the role?
Member Shannon?
I. Member Marshall? Member Kichara?
Sorry, if, if I may, if I may. It's my understanding that we do not have a complete application. We have not yet started the sixty day window for the LWRP review. This is the board's perspective. We're waiting for a complete application that'll be determined by TY Lynn. And that will forward that, Mindy, you to, uh, Mr. DiMarzo, Mr. Nowler. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. I move to close and second that and I vote aye.
Okay, Mr. Kichara, remember Kichara?
Hi.
Chairperson Loda?
Yes.
Motion passes, meaning is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.